Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting for March 28, 2019, here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For those that are able, please rise and join us with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I just want to remind everyone, there will be an opportunity to hear each and every one of you after the business of the meeting has been completed. I'll try to move as quickly as we can through the agenda process so that you can have your chance to speak at the end of the meeting. There will be ample time at the end of the meeting to speak, as I mentioned, just as we did last time, and we'll hear from each and every one of you with the allotted time that's on the agenda. Our objective is to listen to all of you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I will look at the first item, meeting minutes. Councilmember Vice Mayor Cubey, can you do the approval of the meeting council minutes?
Move to approve meeting minutes 3A through 1, 2, and 3.
Before we do that, I know Councilman Navarro, you on the line?
Yeah, I'm on the line.
Okay. So items 3A, 1 through 3 has been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Vice Mayor Cubey.
Move to approve items 3B, 1 through 13.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey to approve board and commission meeting minutes. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. The next item is my mayor's reports and announcements, and I'm going to come down to the podium. All right. Here in Tempe, we annually celebrate April as Bike Month. Tempe is a gold level bicycle-friendly community, has one of the highest percentages of bicycle commuters in the country, and with almost 4% of Tempe residents biking to work throughout the month, we hope you will join us for Tour de Tempe on Sunday, April 7, and Wednesday, April 17, for Bike to Work Day. And with that, I would like to read a proclamation for Bike Month where states were asked, Tempe will hold its 23rd Annual Tour de Tempe Community Bike Ride on April 7 and 27th Annual Bike to Work Day event on April 17 to celebrate biking in the community and encourage bicycling as an alternative mode of transportation. And whereas Tempe has more than 215 miles of bikeways, including on-street bike lanes, multi-use paths, protected and buffered bike lanes, and Tempe is designated as a gold level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists to provide comfortable and convenient bike facilities such as a multi-use path, protected bike lanes, and bicycle bridges. And with the support of the community partners, including Arizona State University and the Tempe Bicycle Action Group, Tempe is well on its way to becoming one of the leading bike communities in the country. And having a strong bicycle culture is good for individuals, communities, and the environment, and it improves our health, strengthens our neighborhoods, and contributes to a vibrant business community, and attracts quality employers and workers to reduce the carbon emissions, and improves our overall quality of life. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor, Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as April 2019 as Bike Month in Tempe. Let's do that. Is there transportation staff? Can you please come down, Shelley? All righty. Next, I would like to see Pastor Will Verovich and our team of Human Services, if you could please come down. We want to take this time to recognize an agenda item on the council that we'll be approving later this evening. Will is a pastor of Redemption Church in Tempe and recently donated $5,000 to go towards a Tempe Human Services Hope Outreach Team. These funds will assist people with ending their homelessness or sustaining their housing, and thereby furthering the city's efforts to become a welcoming and inclusive city. When the community can come together to meet our residents' needs, we not only improve the quality of life, but ensure that Tempe is thriving. A big thank you to leadership Pastor Verovich and his congregation. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank them so much. All right. Next, Julie Reiki, Scott Sims, and Carrie Collins-Fadel, could you please come on down? We are joined here today by Ms. Collins-Fadel, the Executive Director of the Arizona Brain Injury Alliance, and with her, we have Scott Sims, a member of the Advisory Council in addition to Julie Reiki, the Board Chair and a Tempe resident. We thank you all for being here today and bringing awareness to the community on brain injuries and those who suffer from them. I do have a proclamation I would like to read that says traumatic brain injury is a public health problem that impacts a reported 1.7 million people in the United States annually. And whereas these individuals, 80,000 to 90,000, sustain permanent disability. Every year in Arizona, there is a reported 1,233 deaths, 6,581 hospitalizations, and over 54,000 emergency department visits resulting in over 574 million in hospital charges due to traumatic brain injury alone, not including acquired non-traumatic brain injury. Unattended injuries accounted for over 86% of the traumatic brain injury and hospitalizations. Almost all Arizona residents, or most Arizona residents, traumatic brain injury resulting in emergency department visits were the highest among children and younger than one years old. And most traumatic brain injuries were predictable and preventable through understanding of associated risks. In Tempe, it is important to spread awareness of this too common injury and promote our community partners such as the Brain Injury Alliance of Arizona as they offer resources and survivor empowerment. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor, Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as March 2019 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. Thank you. My next announcement is, if we could have Matt Wilczek. Where's Matt here? Matt's not here? Okay. As somebody who know, or may know, Tempe held its second successful Instagrammy competition. We acknowledge award winners with a wonderful reception at the Tempe Center for the Arts in January. Mr. Wilczek was unfortunately not able to attend there, but he still wanted to be able to be recognized and receive the Tempe's Wave Maker Award. Well, this is a long overdue, but thank you again for your participation in wonderful photography. If I use time, I think we have a video. If you could roll that video. All right. Well, first of all, I want to apologize to John Sipulinski. He is the Tempe Wave Maker Award winner. Can you please come down? We have a great little photo with it with your name on there. Let's give John a round of applause. With that, I want to just remind everyone that we have on our agenda tonight, per the city charter, we have board and commission appointments this evening as part of our regular council meeting agenda, with help of my colleagues and council members with Adam Navarro and Councilmember Jennifer Adams and Joel Navarro that helped with the selections of the appointments. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to share some wonderful work that's being done for our blind and visually impaired community, made possible by a grant from the Gila River Indian Community. In 2016, Stephanie Districk, our Information Systems Manager, and Michelle Stokes, our ADA Compliance Specialist, worked with former transit manager Mike Navarez to brainstorm ideas on how we could better assist people who are visually impaired in finding bus stops and bus route information. They came up with the idea to use location-aware technology in the form of a programmed app and beacons to provide audible bus stop locations, routes, and safety information at the Tempe Transportation Center. Staff partnered with ASU's Geospatial Research and Solutions Group to program the app and the messages, then worked with LifeQuest Training and Consulting Company and Southern Arizona Association for the Visually Impaired to test the pilot with members of the blind and low-vision communities. I'm proud of the work being done in Tempe to make our community accessible and inclusive. We will now show a brief video that shows how the information about the pilot and the evaluation process.
The city of Tempe, through a $30,000 grant from the Gila River Indian Community, conducted a pilot project on ADA transit wave finding for people who are blind or have low vision. With the help of Tempe's Enterprise GIS Team, Arizona State University's Geospatial Research and Solutions Group, and the Tempe Transportation Department, staff installed beacons at the Tempe Transportation Center. The goal was to develop an app that worked with the beacons to provide a more effective way to assist individuals with vision loss in navigating to bus stops and obtaining bus information and scheduling. LifeQuest Training and Consulting was contracted to evaluate the effectiveness of the pilot project and the app. A total of 26 people participated in the evaluation between June and October 2018. Most of the participants are affiliated with the Southern Arizona Association for the Visually Impaired, otherwise known as SAVI. SAVI staff members also participated, even though a few were cited or partially cited. Participants varied in gender, ethnicity, age, level of vision, degree of vision loss, level of comfort with technology and travel, and other factors. Prior to starting, all participants were given instruction on what to expect during the evaluation, then given time to ask questions for clarification before they proceeded. Participants started on the southwest corner of the Tempe Transportation Center. Jay Whipple, an orientation and mobility specialist, accompanied each person to ensure their safety. He also monitored the effectiveness of the app and the beacons. Iain Mitra, the app's developer, was also on-site to gain insight and feedback into the app's effectiveness. Over the course of their travels, participants were asked to listen for the app's notification of the upcoming bus stop. When treated by the beacon, the app would verbalize information related to the direction they were facing, what bus stop they were near, which bus stop that stop served, items in the vicinity, and potential travel hazards. Participants were able to adjust the volume on the phone, but not the app itself. Initially, the rate of speech was not adjustable, but this was modified during the course of the evaluation series based on feedback from the participants. When the evaluation started, the information spoken would continue until the message was completed. If a person stayed in place, it would repeat again without any indication that it was a repeat. If a person continued to move towards the other beacons, the original message would continue, causing some to miss the next bus stop. Based on feedback from the first two days of evaluations, the developer made modifications. So by the third and final evaluation day, if a person stayed in place to listen to the app, the message would stop after it was completed. Then a person could continue to the beaconed bus stop and hear that information as they approached. All participants were asked to complete a basic survey at the end of the evaluation. They were asked to measure the effectiveness of the volume, the message clarity, details, and the overall rating. 23 participants completed the formal evaluation, though informal feedback was collected throughout all three days. Using a scale from 1 to 10, with 10 being the most effective, volume was rated at 7.3, message clarity was 8.5, message details were 8.1, and overall effectiveness was rated at 7.6. While the verbal feedback from the participants was consistently positive and hopeful, it also included recommendations for improvements and questions about when the app would be ready for formal use by the public. Prior to public availability, some improvements are recommended. These include options for louder speech, ensuring a notification push when entering the area of the next beacon, even if the first message has not completed, providing options to pre-enter the exact bus stop needed in order to navigate directly to that stop and avoid the additional information of bus stops along the way, and adding an audio indicator, such as a beep, between the end of one message and the beginning of another. Probably the most significant observation was that the phone using the app would heat up over time, which seemed to affect the accuracy of the messages. Further development of this app, with the assistance of a small focus group from the pool of evaluators who have already participated, would assist in refining and preparing it for a wider range of use. Overall, the evaluation concluded that this app has a great deal of potential for those with vision loss. We appreciate and honor the Gila River Indian Community for funding this pilot project. The efforts of the city of Tempe's IT professionals, Arizona State University, and LifeQuest Training Consulting were invaluable to its success, and we are indebted to Jay Whipple and SAVI for their evaluation assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council. Unless an item is removed for separate consideration, members of the public may refrain or remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on an item, please fill a speaker's card, which can be found in back of the council chambers, and turn that over to the front of the room. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda is as follows. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A9, with the exception of 5A6 and 5A9, which have, these 5A6 and 5A9 have been removed or deleted from the agenda at the request of our staff. Then awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B10. I will need to pull items 5B8 for separate consideration. And then resolutions, 5C1 through 5C2. Is there, now, again, any agenda item that's on the agenda that is marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item, and it can be removed for separate consideration. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to have any of those public hearing items I just read removed? Seeing none, I'll look to my council colleagues. Is there a motion with the consent agenda as read? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Next is our non-consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes. Oh, wait, I do need to get that one.
5B8, thank you.
Yep. I do need to, items 5B8, we need to look for that for a separate consideration. And 5B8 is to hold a public hearing to recommend approval of a series, oh, sorry, 5B8 is to hold, 5B8 is to award a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options for ADVARC for the purchase of tactical robots to support the police department. This is not a public hearing item. It is up. This is not a public hearing item. Is there anyone from the council wishing to make a motion on item 5B8? This is a public hearing item? Yes. Mr. Green?
Yes, Mayor Mitchell, council members, Michael Green, the procurement administrator for Tempe. We are making a recommendation tonight for a one-year contract to a company by the name of ADVARC for the purchase of four tactical robots for police. And we wanted to make sure you knew that as a result of our notification to our bidders that responded about our recommendation tonight, we did receive a protest from the other company. We only had two firms respond. Transcend Robotics filed a protest with this on Tuesday, and they issued, they noted several issues that they felt that the committee erred on. And as a result of the protest, we convened a meeting yesterday with representatives from our city attorney's office, police, and internal services, and we reviewed the protest issues in close detail. And based on that review, we do feel that the protest is without merit, and that we do feel that the recommendation is sound and in compliance with the RFP requirements and our city procurement code. So, and I did reach out to the protestant and explain that we were making a decision to not stay the recommendation and that we would move forward with a formal response to the protest, but in the meantime, we do feel confident that this is a sound recommendation for the city.
Okay. Thank you. So again, this is not a public hearing item. Is there any comments or discussion from the council or a motion on item 5B8? It's been moved by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Vice Mayor Cubey. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Next item is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items for scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Item 6A1 is to approve the utilization of a one-year National Association of the State Procurement officials cooperative contract with CDW Government LLC for the purchase of desktop and server operations system software, Microsoft Enterprise software support, software licensing, and related services to be overseen by the Internal Services Department. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A1? Is there a motion on item 6A1? Moved by Vice Mayor Cubey. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero. Next is item 6A2, is approve a one-year contract renewal with Cigna Dental Health Plan of Arizona Incorporated, provide a dental deferred provider organization plan and dental health maintenance organization plan for eligible employees, city employees, and their dependents. Excuse me, sir. In the gray, I'm going to ask you to just, we're going to get through this agenda, then emeralds have a time to talk. Thank you.
He has a mental disability, and he's trying to pull this form out, and nobody's assisting him.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. We'll have someone help that individual. Thank you. We'll have someone help him. Thank you for letting us know. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 6A2, is there, there's not a public hearing item? Any comments or discussion for item 6A2? Is there a motion on item 6A2? It's moved by Vice Mayor Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those, please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries six to zero. Next is item, is our next section of our consent agenda is the ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing of these votes and items will be scheduled for April 11, 2019. Ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, item 6B1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopted ordinance for accessory dwelling and guest quarters, consisting of changes within the zoning and development code, including new regulations for accessory dwellings and amendments to guest quarters found in sections 3-102, 3-401, and 3-402, and 3-411. The applicant is the city of Tempe. The second final public hearing is scheduled for April 11, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that hearing. Any comments or discussion from council on item 6B1? Next, item 6B2 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of waterline easement located within the Tempe Hondo Autoplex at the southeast corner of the interstate I-10 and Elliott Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 11, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B2? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6B3? Seeing none. Next is item 6B4, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing, oh, sorry, 6B3, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement located in a planned area development for the northwest corner of Apache Boulevard and South Terrace Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 11, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B3? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, close that portion. Any comments from the council on item 6B3? This is only the first hearing? Seeing none. Item 6B4, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of city-owned improved property at the address of 2240 East Maryland Drive, 2303 East Maryland Drive, 2307 East Maryland Drive, 2239 East Laird Street, and 2304 East Randall Drive to Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation and authorization, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to convey property, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and related transactions. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 11, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B4? Can you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments or discussion from the council? Seeing none. Next, the agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on February 28, 2019, and votes will be taken tonight. Ordinances and items for a second hearing and final adoption. Item 6C1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the dedication of a city-owned land at various locations along the Tempe Streetcar Route for the use of public right-of-way, and authorizing a deputy public works director, transportation, to execute and declaration and memorialize in such dedication and related documents. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience like to discuss item 61? Could you please get my attention? Close that portion. Any comments or discussion from council or a motion for item 61? It's been moved by Councilmember Granville. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero. Next is item 6C2, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of a wind-foot non-vehicular access easement recorded on Lot 1 and portion of Lot 12, the Ho-Ho Comm Industrial Park subdivision located in the southwest corner, University Drive and 52nd Street. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on that? Could you please, on item 6C2, get my attention? Seeing none. Close that portion. Any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6C2? It's been approved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero. Next item is item 6C3, is to hold a second final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, any planned area development overlay, a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan projected land use map amendment from commercial to mixed use, and a general plan projected density, map amendment from medium to high density to high density, and a development plan review for a new four-story mixed-use development consisting of 395 dwelling units and two live-work units for Camden Hayden 2 located 600 East Curry Road. The applicant is Hugh Mantle and Affiliates. Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Mayor, how are you this evening? Thank you.
How are you? How are you?
We have had a chance since the last meeting to talk to a number of you, Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Cubey, Councilmember Arredondo. And one of the things that continues to come up is affordable housing. So we would ask for continuance to the April 11th to talk about that more. We've heard about it from some of the neighbors as well. Darlene Justice, who I think is here behind me, has mentioned that. We've had a number of conversations. Mr. Bentley, who is here as well, has been working with us to address that issue. And so we would ask for a continuance until April 11th to continue discussing that with your staff.
I'm making a motion.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
I would just say I, I first and foremost appreciate you taking the time to have the conversation with all of us. I always think that's really important, especially the neighbors too. And I think anything that we can do to really work on our priorities with affordable housing, I'm certainly willing to wait until, until April 11th for that. So I really appreciate that and I would make the motion for a continuance until April 11th.
Yeah, there's, there's time for discussion and, Vice Mayor Cubey?
Thank you for the continued conversations and just wanna, I heard you say affordable housing, but also workforce housing. That's a consideration as you look at possible solutions. I would urge you to consider that as well and.
It should have been more extensive in my comments. In fact, every one of my comments have entailed both of those things and I think.
I thought so, but I just wanted to.
You've mentioned in the past even that maybe sometimes we use those terms more in the same realm as we should. And you're right, I should have mentioned both and the discussion is still on both of those issues and will continue to be.
We all know that, I mean, that the best housing is housing that's mixed with all sorts of housing styles and type, not styles, but types. So I would just urge that consideration. Thank you.
One second. Is there, Councilmember, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, is there, would you like to amend your original motion for both?
My motion, my court.
Oh, you just continue.
I just wanna thank you for taking the lead on this, Charles, and really listening to our concerns and pushing forward with affordable or workplace housing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll second Councilmember Arredondo Savage's motion.
So there's been a motion by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Granville to continue item six C three to the April 11th meeting. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll see you again soon.
Thank you. With that, I will now go to, uh, public appearances. I do have some cards, but first, we have some scheduled public appearances. I would like to remind everyone, per the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping at feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited. And violations of these rules may result in the removal of the city council meeting. Under scheduled public appearances, we have, first one I have is Mr. Jim Pinkerman. Please state your name.
Jim Pinkerman.
Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
A place of, excuse me. Jim Pinkerman. That's P-I-N-K-E-R-M, like the color pink. And I live at 1461 East Edgewood Avenue in Mesa. We are 85204. Is that what you need? Okay, good. I represent the, support, the East Valley Support Your Local Police Committee. I have eleven packets for each of you and kind of follow along. I've written this down, but I've, I'm reading from what I've written. So, as soon as I get my glasses on. We are the East Valley Support Your Local Police Committee, part of a nationwide group of the John Birch Society. And you will have seen our car stickers. You may have car stickers. Support your local police and keep them independent. And I will address one side of keep them independent. And that is from outside civilian police review boards. And Mr. O'Malley with me will discuss police independence from nationalization under Washington, DC. Both are to be avoided. We should avoid a citizens' review board of unelected private citizens to critique and help evaluate and decide the actions of police and sheriff's departments in their everyday duties and in devastating shooting tragedies, et cetera. These review boards have been a well-known tactic of socialist communist activities since the 1930s. Since the 1930s. And we've had, and have been extremely demoralizing to police wherever they have been used. And trained socialist radicals can easily control them. And remember, your city's government already has the proper review boards to do it correctly. Mesa City wisely wrote in their 1967 charter, a quote, "A civilian review board is prohibited by this charter." In our, in our packet to you, you will see this little three-minute speech and our letterhead showing POTER in actions, a self-proclaimed goal to disrupt and dismantle systems of oppression. It's on their website. And you will remember that they tried disrupting you at a recent meeting here. POTER has called for an unelected outside civilian review board for the Phoenix Police and will likely attempt the same thing for Tempe. Also in the picture of the February 15th Tempe March, the sign bearer on the left holds the sign by Party for Socialism and Liberation.
Sir, sir, your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have, yes? Vice Mayor Cubey?
You can sit down. I just wanna say that our.
Please sit down.
Please sit down. Thank you. But we do have a citizens' review panel and it is operational. It's in, always in operation and it's made up of citizens and it's code, chapter two, article, sorry, article 10 of the Tempe City Code. So this is an ordinance that governs the way that we handle this process and there's nothing communistic about it. It's part of our city code. Thank you.
All right. Next is Mr. Peter O'Malley. Please state your name and place of record for, place of residence for the record.
Mayor and council members, my name is Peter J. O'Malley. I live on a county island in Mesa. You're in a good position to appreciate what I have to share. You may or may not be aware of the current drive to nationalize our police. It's happening quietly with the media, of course, not giving you a clue. What we're seeing is the federal government arming, conditioning, and training local jurisdictions to knuckle under federal standards. Needless to say, when governments dangle riot gear and armaments and free training under the noses of cash-strapped cities, there, there are always strings attached. A good, good example of that is right here in Arizona. One-third of our state budget is now paid for in federal dollars. They own us. So our leadership cannot say no to anything they would suggest. You don't, you don't need to be reminded, we don't need anything remotely like what happened in Nazi Germany with Erastapo or the horrors of the USSR, all happening after they had nationalized their police. But this is in store if we don't put a stop to it. So I've joined with some others to wake the town and tell the people, listen, there's a deliberate strategy going on here. And that's to place all police under a national umbrella, slowly but surely. Our counter message is support your local police and keep them, and keep them independent. One of the tactics they use is to foment riots and looting in local communities like they've done in Ferguson and Baltimore and Milwaukee, Charlotte, Charlottesville. Then, when the, when the police are temporarily overwhelmed, the citizens cry out, please, someone help us. And the feds step right in, meaning big dollars and big controls are on their way. So why are we here? Well, to ask you to just review an exposé of the problem as we see it in this hard-hitting journal, The New American, and we'll pass those on. The New American is a publication of the John Birch Society and I bring that out because there are people who are, still remember the smear campaigns of the 60s when they tried to silence the society. And their objective is less government, more personal responsibility. So by reading this, you'll be able to understand better why there really is a police crisis looming in America.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kim Baker. Next, we have Mr. Stephen Baker. Next, we have Joanne Scott Woods. Next, we have Mr. Frank Scuzzafa. All right, that's all the scheduled I have tonight. Our next item is our unscheduled public appearances and I do have these cards. I will, you have up to three minutes and I will read your names as I have received the cards. The first one is Michael Beaver.
Once again, thank you for allowing a person from Mesa to address you. And I am from Mesa, but I care about Tempe and I care about its people. And I appreciate that. I've had the opportunity to visit with a couple of you in the past couple of weeks and I appreciate that very much. Speak up more. I will try. Thank you. If I better. And I've reached out to a few others. I'd like to sit down and chat with you a little bit too. If you recall my comments last month, it centered on three points, I'll not revisit those. But I think, you can't back time up. Antonio is gone. He's dead. But we can change what we do going forward. We can change our methods, our approach, our review, our accountability, and all of that. And do something about it. Now, the folks that are here that were very boisterous, boisterous last, last time, it's heavy on their heart and as it should be. It should be on all of our hearts. You need to let a little of that steam vent off. We need to work together and figure out a solution. I'll volunteer my time. I will help in any way I can. It's that important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alexa Isis? Did I pronounce that correctly? Alexa? Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hi, my name is Alexia. I'm not gonna state my place of residence, but I came here to talk about Antonio Arce. I'm sure you guys are already familiar with the same story that we've been telling you guys on and on. And we're here because there has been no justice. Time and time again, we have seen that your police continue to kill people and hurt people, shoot people, and without any regards for our lives. We are the community that you said you were going to serve and you aren't doing it. We obviously don't come here because we think we can plead with you for anything, but we're here to continue the fight. I, I don't agree with the approach that, um, that you guys have taken, continuing to ignore these things. I, I don't understand. The police continue to harass people. And I'm not sure if I can ask any questions, but I would like to know, what, what are you guys doing right now to, to, um, to stop police violence and stop police violence in general?
Unfortunately, we cannot comment because it is under unscheduled public appearances and it's a state law. You've said that over and over. We can only comment on scheduled agenda items that are on the agenda.
What if we have asked for an agenda item continuously and you guys have not put anything on?
We, we, as I stated last time, the report is at Maricopa County. We made a statement last time. We're gonna continue to make statements. We are listening to you because we wanna hear your concerns.
I've seen continuously.
And I'm gonna tell you right now, ma'am, I cannot respond any further than that at this time.
Why are you talking to me? Can I just speak real quick? I understand you're trying to answer my question, but I'm asking, why haven't you guys done anything? I don't, the, the statements that you guys have made are bullshit. All the stuff that you have been putting out is bullshit. All, all the things that you've been putting out are undermining what happened to Antonio and that's not right. So we came here with demands. We came here to tell you that you need to rename Svob Park to Antonio Park, out of respect for Antonio and his family. We came here to ask that you provide the Tempe Police Civilian Review Board with the power to subpoena, hire, and fire police officers. We came here to ask for a fully transparent investigation into the wrongful death of Antonio Arce. And, yeah, I also have another question. What, are you guys going to do anything about these demands?
We'll have to get with you because we cannot respond publicly to this because it's not agendaized.
Can you just tell me in general?
Ma'am, I can't respond. Our council, none of us can. It's against the law.
You guys are right in front of me right now. Why, why can't you say it?
Do you wanna provide the statement for the law?
I, I don't wanna hear the statement. I wanna hear a direct answer.
It's not a statement, it's a law, ma'am.
I, I, I don't.
There's a law that we have to abide by.
I don't care about what, what you guys say is the law. You guys aren't following the.
Ma'am, we, we care and we, we are.
You guys don't care. You guys don't care about anything.
We do care, but.
You had people come up here crying. You guys walked out on us last time.
We did not walk out.
You walked out on us.
We have a normal protocol.
These police officers, this Chief Sylvia Moore walked out on us. All you walked out on us. Cubey, you walked out on us too.
Ma'am, your time is up.
All of you walked out on us.
Next speaker is Sebastian. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Okay. Sebastian, Tempe.
Local socialist radical.
Let's see, where, where was I with this? Looks like I, looks like I lost what I was gonna say. All right. Well, what I have to say is kind of marginal. We have demands, as you were just made aware of. As far as the council goes, we want a civilian review board that has teeth, the power to subpoena, hire, fire police officers, rename Svob Park to Antonio Arce Memorial Park. We want a fully transparent investigation into the wrongful death of Antonio Arce. And as far as the city manager goes, we want Officer Hyun fired for the murder, you know, as you might do. We want the Sylvia fired for kind of endorsing this brutal policing and for, you know, protecting violent officers. You know, I, I had to laugh. I was on my, you know, on my YouTube feed and I saw a TED Talk about, you know, mindful policing featuring Sylvia Moore of the Tempe Police Department. I thought I must have misread it, but in fact, no, I looked at it and it was you and it was made, I believe, or at least published after, after the event. And it's kind of indicative of a, a whole thing here, how you appropriate, you know, Buddhist language, a complex, proud, and sophisticated religious tradition to justify murder and violence. You know, it, it shows how you're not only out of touch with reality and with the community that you purport to serve, but you're also actively contemptuous of it and that extends to the whole organization. I have to say that we came out, the people rose up and Tempe Police repressed us, arrested some of our comrades, and, you know, we're back. Didn't stop us and it won't. We are breaking the chains that fire. We are breaking the chains that fastened upon us by the likes of you, and we will assert our interests over yours, and that's coming soon, all right? Oh, here's your... Our demands, in case you didn't have it. It was already this passive arrest.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next is Samaya Dowd. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Here's the microphone. Okay. My name is... Hello, my name is Samaya Dowd. I'm a human rights activist from Phoenix, and I'm here to advocate for justice for Antonio Arce, a 14-year-old brown kid who was murdered by Tempe Police, shot in the back while unarmed. You know, Antonio is part of a long pattern of vicious police violence, mostly targeting black and brown people. And already this year alone, in Maricopa County, there's been numerous people murdered by the police, and it needs to stop. This is a pattern that needs to stop. I have several demands here for the... Excuse me. For the Tempe City Manager to fire Officer Hain for the murder of Antonio Arce, and to fire Tempe Police Chief Sylvia Moore for endorsing brutal policing and protecting violent officers, and for the Tempe City Council to provide the Tempe Police Civilian Review Board with the power to subpoena and to hire and fire police officers, also to rename Zvob Park to Antonio Arce Memorial Park, and a fully transparent investigation into the wrongful death of Antonio Arce. I also want to mention, aside from these demands, that, you know, a bunch of us came here trying to speak to you a month ago, a month ago today on the 28th of February. You guys walked out on us, and, you know, it's like we couldn't even speak to you, so a bunch of us marched. Four of us were violently arrested by Tempe Police. I was one of them. You know, this is complete and blatant political repression. It's a political attack because you guys don't want to hold your police officers accountable. It's unacceptable. So I'm demanding that you guys, you know, hold your police accountable, hold yourselves accountable. We are the people here, and we're demanding justice, you know? We have to change this. We've got to stop this police violence that's constantly harming our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Madison West. And on deck is Nico. Nico's on deck.
Yeah, thanks for making me talk in public. I hate this, but I have some flyers for you. I have, let's see, 11 people murdered, 11 people... Yeah, 11 people murdered in the state of Arizona by police in 2019 alone. Like, it's three months into 2019, and you killed 11 people. Every single one of you who hasn't done something about this, which is all of you, has blood on your hands, especially the officer who actually killed Antonio, a 14-year-old who was running away. It's a 14-year-old. It's a kid. You murdered a child. So once again, I'm going to reiterate the demands. Fire the officer who murdered a child. Fire the chief who keeps apologizing for that officer and refuses to hold her officers accountable. Provide the civilian review board with the power to subpoena, hire, and fire police officers, the least you could do, honestly. Rename Zvob Park to Antonio Arce Memorial Park in his honor, and a fully transparent investigation. We haven't heard anything, anything at all. What's happening? Tell us. We want to know.
Thank you. And following Nico is going to... On deck is going to be Darren Barrett.
Hi, my name is Nico. I am actually a resident of Tempe. I'm here with my community to continue to demand justice for Antonio and for killer cops to be held accountable, as we continue to call out a corrupt system that allows for a child to be shot directly in the back while fleeing, and why we should be critical of a system that continues to kill black and brown kids with zero accountability. A system that demands that we follow legality but then does not set the same example for themselves and only applies to the people without power. And they continue to bend that narrative of legality to suit whatever narrative the police needs to justify their own criminality, which is what we saw last city council meeting with the rest of four protesters who didn't really do a damn thing. So as we continue, we want our demands met. We want full transparency, which should have been the base for comparison for a just... Justice in general the first time around, and here we are a third time, and we still don't see a full transparency in the investigation. We want Officer... What is it? Jane? Jean?
Klein.
Klein to be fired. We still want Chief of Police Sylvia to be fired for endorsing police brutality and protecting violent officers. And we want the park across from Antonio's to be renamed in his honor and respect and power to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christina Green. Or Darren. I'm sorry, Darren's up. I did say that. I did. Sorry.
How's it going? I'm Darren from Tempe. As you know, I was one of the four people arrested a month ago today. I'm here to speak on the demands that we have in the case of Antonio Arce. Fire Officer Hain for the murder of Antonio Arce. Do not allow him to be hired by another precinct or any other job that allows a deadly weapon in his hand, and fire Sylvia Moore to not be allowed to be chief of any other police department or work for any police department. I'd like to see Tempe Police Civilian Review Board with the power to subpoena and hire and fire police officers, like I said, without the right to apply for another police department. Rename Zvob Park to Antonio Arce Memorial. It's bad enough that a family already has to go to the graveyard to, you know, see and have that feeling of presence of Antonio Arce in their feelings and their heart. I would like to see Zvob Park renamed to Antonio Arce Memorial so that family could just walk down the street and feel the love of Antonio Arce, feel the love of the community. I would also like a fully transparent investigation into the wrongful death of Antonio Arce. Like I said at the first meeting, this isn't the first officer that I know of that has killed an unarmed teen. Yes, he had a BB gun, but it wasn't lethal. He was... He was killed. The blind spot that this officer claimed he ran into was not even big enough to be a blind spot. Lieutenant Eduardo Met, the officer who killed Dalvin Hollins on July 27, 2016, retired within months of killing Dalvin, and we didn't hear an update in this case until the year anniversary. And I'll be damned if we see an update on this case a year later, Sylvia. So step up. Bill Montgomery needs to step up and do your job because unarmed teens are being killed. You got that, Sylvia?
Thank you. Next is Christina Green. Following Christina is Joshua Klaus.
My name's Christina Green. I am from Phoenix, Arizona, and you know why I'm up here. I am up here to protest, to denounce the officer who murdered Antonio Arce and all of you who have not done anything about it, so you're all complicit. Anyways, I'm going to just repeat all the demands that the community has, to fire and arrest Chief Sylvia Moore, fire and arrest Officer Joseph whatever his name is, like Yay, Nyan, whatever, rename Zvob Park, Antonio Arce Park, I think, and to give the civilian review board higher, fire, and subpoena power over... To fire and hire, you know, cops. This is a very... This is like, here's the thing. Like, these demands are so minimum. This is like the bare minimum. This is like the bare standard. Like, if I was working at McDonald's or something, and I ended up, I don't know, killing somebody while I was frying fucking chicken nuggets with my frying pan or whatever, whatever the use of the basket, I would be in prison forever. You know what I mean? And like, you're a cop, like a freaking cop. Murder is a kid, a 14-year-old boy, and it's just like, he's on paid leave. Like, this is like vacation. I would love to have paid leave for any job I had, you know? So it's just, this is like the bare minimum. This is just like the bare minimum. I know I'm like a Pico commie, what do you decide, but I'm the radical, you know, but this is just the bare minimum. Like, this is just it. And we're not going to go away. We're going to be here again and again. Just do the bare minimum, and this is the bare minimum. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. Next is Joshua Klaus. And then after Joshua, we got Orion DeFranco.
My name's Joshua, and I'm from the city, and I'm here because I am extremely disappointed in the city council, and especially you, Councilman McCooby. I know you came to Young Democrats, and you gave a whole talk about how you're super progressive, but you still failed to show that throughout this entire ordeal. You have failed to do anything and fulfill your responsibility. You are the vice mayor. You have more pull than you like to admit you have around here. You can influence things around here. You all have the duty to do that. But you, someone who tries to be a champ... Who proclaims to be a champion of progressivism, should be especially doing that, Lauren Cooby. You might be the badass of the week, but really, you're the elephant in the room. And I have some demands from you guys. I demand that Officer Hain be fired for the murder of Antonio Arce. I demand that Sylvia Moore be fired for her handling of this case. I demand that Zvob Park be renamed Antonio Arce Park, and I demand that the civilian review board has hiring, firing, and subpoena powers. These are honestly very simple demands, and it shouldn't be too much for a progressive champion like you, Lauren.
Next is Orion DeFranco. Following Orion, we got Tyler Levens.
Hello, my name is Orion DeFranco. I reside in Tempe, Arizona. I can see the frustration on several of your faces as these issues are brought up. I here am also to discuss the murder of Antonio Arce. I hope we are able to, in response to that frustration, convey our frustration with the response to the murder of a 14-year-old child on behalf of a law enforcement officer consisting solely of wait for the report, wait for the report, wait for the report. And we don't want there to be another report and another report after this about more children murdered in the city of Tempe on the hands of police officers. The other response we receive is, we can't do this. The law prevents us from doing this. Legalese prevents us from doing this. Council policy prevents us from speaking on this issue. I guess all we are asking for is at least one member of this council to provide some semblance of political courage, some willingness to grow beyond this sense of remaining strictly in the hands of the status quo and refusing to speak to the concerns of this community. I would reiterate the demands that have been made previously, the firing of Officer Hain for the murder of Antonio Arce, the firing of the police chief Sylvia Moore for endorsing, as has already been reiterated, brutal policing and the murder of this child. As has been said, we'd like to see the civilian review board have subpoena power, the ability to fire police officers. We'd like to rename Zvob Park to Antonio Arce Park in his memory in order to commemorate the life of a child who was extinguished far beyond his time, as well as a fully transparent investigation into this wrongful death. I understand when you say that there are certain things that you cannot do with regard to this report, but a family has lost their son, and they will never see him again, ever. And so I guess what we are hoping for is that you will at least speak to that in a way that conveys some sort of human emotion. Thank you.
Tyler Levens? William Robles?
Hey, Mayor, Council. I'm William Robles from the town of Guadalupe. I do Guadalupe News. I know you know that very well. First thing I want to bring up is the roundabout that I've been talking about for a few years. I keep asking and asking and asking to the council, what are you guys going to do about the roundabout on Grove Parkway and Res Drive? Also, Guadalupe stands behind you on a lot of issues, but I will say, I can't mention names. I don't want people to get fired on the council in Guadalupe. They stand in solidarity with Antonio Arce. I know first 10 because I do Cop Watch, plus I do Guadalupe News, what happens with Tempe Police in Guadalupe. When you guys come to Guadalupe, you guys are real aggressive. You guys don't come in one per car. You guys come in two. A lot of people in Guadalupe are not too happy the way you guys handle business in Guadalupe. I'm asking, I'm politely demanding that you guys approach Guadalupe more better and/or nicer. And when we try to talk to you guys, what's going on, what's going on? Like I was a couple of months ago, they told me, get out of here. That was very rude. You ought to tell your officers, calm down, talk to the people the correct way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. Next is Megan Salsito. Megan? Megan Arce Salsito or Sarah Tocola?
Megan, please, just talk to me. The next person, Sarah?
Yeah, Sarah.
Michael, can you grab me my book? And I'd be going up one right after another. So my name's Sarah.
Can you state... Are you Sarah, right?
Yes.
Okay, this is for you, Sarah. That time.
Yeah, Megan also seemed...
Well, Megan's going to have to come up and speak.
What's that?
Megan's going to have to come up and speak.
Do that.
Okay. Okay. That's fine.
So, I'm Sarah. I live and work in Tempe. I'm a PhD student, and I'm with Black Lives Matter, Phoenix Metro. I want to speak to first why Megan gave her time to me. She was Antonio Arce's girlfriend. There are a group of eighth graders here because of what happened. You guys are failing to acknowledge the psychological impacts that this middle school is going to have. These kids should not be learning about civic engagement because their friend was murdered. That's what we're dealing with here. And they don't feel safe to come up here, and they don't feel like you're listening to them. Mayor, at the youth town hall, you said you want kids' voices to be heard, and you know what the eighth graders told me? How are their voices supposed to be heard when you're killing them and shooting them in the back? All I can say is I'm disappointed. All I can say is that you proved me right, that you all are racist. If you remember what I asked last time, it was to prove us wrong, because communities of color already knew you would fail us. But I had an inkling of faith that you would prove us wrong, because Tempe prides itself on the fact that it's supposedly a blue dot in the Red Sea, and I have fought in Phoenix Council against the most deadliest police force, but Phoenix doesn't claim to be progressive. Phoenix admits it's conservative. So I thought, if there's anywhere we could win a victory in this hostile hellhole desert state, it might be Tempe. But I guess I was wrong, and that's why I hate Democrats and liberals, because at least Republicans and conservatives tell us that they hate us and make it obvious that they are racist. We know where they stand. Democrats tell us they're the anti-racist party and that we have to support them or else the bad guys will win. And I have come to the same conclusion as Martin Luther King Jr., and I quote his letter from a Birmingham jail. First, I must confess that over the last few years, I have been gravely disappointed in the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that Negroes' greatest stumbling block in the stride toward freedom is not the white citizens' counsel or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, "I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I can't agree with your methods of direct action," who paternalistically feels he can set the timetable for another man's freedom, who lives by the myth of time, and who constantly advises the Negro to wait into a more convenient season. Shallow understanding from the people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. And I end quote. And I end quote. Tempe City Council, MLK was talking about you. You say that you're progressive. You say that you care about us, but you are spineless. You tell us you can't do anything, that we have to trust the process, but the process doesn't work for us. And I know that you're currently spending tax dollars to do work on unlearning your racism and have a diversity officer. Well, did they not tell you that institutions are institutionally racist and that these systems by their very design are designed to fail us? So when you say you have to follow the process and make no attempt in intervening in this racist system, you are telling us that you have to follow racism. Did they not tell you that the police were created to catch slaves and kill natives? And that when you stand with the police, you stand with slavery and genocide? You hypocritically host unity marches for the diversity while remaining silent about the genocide you are responsible for. And let me remind you about what MLK has said again. To remain silent in the face of oppression is to choose the side of oppressor. You apply and give yourselves awards for human rights, but you justify shooting children in the back. Dalvin Hollins was shot in the back at nineteen in 2016, and there's still no justice. And now they shot Antonio, a fourteen-year-old, in the back. And when they demand justice, you demonize children. You bring up every mistake they ever did as a child with an undeveloped prefrontal cortex and then blame them for their own murder. Now, you may ask why I have this book here on the Nazi doctors. Well, for starters, I'm preparing for my comprehensive exams, and my research is on why Western society won't address climate change. More specifically, my research is on the colonizer mentality, the psychological conditions that allows for our society to allow business as usual, which equates to our collective suicide and allows for silence on genocide. Let me read you a passage real quick. The reason that the Nazis were, doctors were able to be, to commit genocide was because of the process of doubling of the self, a dialectic between two selves in terms of autonomy and connection. The individual Nazi doctor needed his Auschwitz self to function psychologically in an environment so antithetical to his prevical, previous ethical standards. He needed his prior self in order to continue to see himself as a humane physician, a husband, and father. The Auschwitz self had to be autonomous and connected to the prior self that gave rise to it. We have a paradox of killing self being created on behalf of what perceives as one healing or survival. This is, allows for the avoidance of guilt. The second self tends to be the one preferring the dirty work. This allow the splitting or disassociation, thus can denote something about Nazis, doctors, suppression of feeling or psychic numbing in relation to the participation of murder. Now, you may wonder what that has to do with this today, and let me tell you. When you tell us that you're following the process, you're doing the same thing that the Nazis doctors were doing, saying that they were just following orders. There is no just difference. You are justifying genocide. So I want you, when you go home tonight, when you hug and kiss your kids goodnight, do not allow yourself to split. Understand? You, uh, many of you are parents yourself. What would you do if it was your son?
Next, we have Mario Martinez.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mario Martinez, and I live in Tempe. I am here to address the, uh, city council about the Kobe Granville investigation, which is not related to this police department discussion, although I respect everything that these people are saying. Uh, I appreciate that. First of all, with the obvious exception of Kobe, I have complete confidence in all members of the council, uh, as far as integrity on this council matter. In regards to the reference po, uh, report that was recently released, there was a transcribed interview between Kobe and the outside council. There is strong evidence that Kobe, at least in the incident that involved me, was not truthful, okay? In this interview, Kobe told the outside council that in reference to a city hall, uh, parking area, uh, encounter, it was just right by the city hall here, in, in relations to a public hearing held on February twentieth, uh, two thousand and eighteen, that he filed a, uh, police report about me, which was fine with me. So after I read that in the report, I called up the police records department, and I asked about it, and, well, they told me it didn't exist, okay? They told me that, uh, let's see, uh, and I want to point out that they, uh, let's see, that, uh, they just had no record of it. The police investigate, uh, the police representatives, her first name, I don't, well, her, the name she gave me was Stephanie, but she gave me her, uh, department ID, which was one eight three three eight. The representative told me that there was no police report regarding that incident in his name or my name. And don't ask me why Kobe would tell the investigator that when he knew there was hard court evidence that it wasn't true. Quite frankly, it appears that Kobe lied again. I sincerely hope that when you decide the code of conduct issue, that you consider Kobe's propensity to lie. There's only two possibilities here, and I'll be perfectly candid. Either Kobe is lying, or he has some sort of psychiatric condition that he thinks these fictitious events are true. I mean, look at the evidence. Look at the evidence in the report. I mean, it's not a nice thing to think about, but there was evidence that he, he raped a minor. There was evidence that he sexually assaulted a minor, uh, let's see, when she was seventeen years old. That is not evidence of a strong psychiatric condition, and we are better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Mr. Granville?
If I could ask, uh, Chief Moore, if you could have a copy of that police report provided to Mr. Martinez as well as to council? If not, I'll provide a copy of it that I have.
Yeah, I'd love to see it. They told me it didn't exist. And I, I can tell you, the police never contacted me about it.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Michael, uh, Loi. Mr. Michael Loi.
Thank you for letting me know about the earlier incident.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm actually coming up here to speak about, sir. My name is Aaron Richardson. I reside like the border of Tempe, Chandler. I'm in Chandler, though. Um, I just think it's kind of ridiculous that the figures of power here are able to discriminate against color, against anything, against disability. It was obvious to everybody here that that's, that member that was in here had a mental disability, and you decided you wanted to threaten and harass him. He left because he was scared of you, sir. Do you know that? Do you know that? He was scared of you. He was scared of prosecution, and he just wanted to speak like I am right now, okay? I feel like everybody should be able to speak, no matter what their color is, no matter what's wrong with their head, they should be able to speak, and you should have nothing to say to them, okay? Do you understand me, sir? Okay, thank you.
Yep. But, hold up.
Next is.
For the record, too. When I came in here, they harassed this man walking his dog, a service dog, and they wanted him to walk through without his dog. I, I believe that's against the Americans with Disability Act, and if you want me to find it, I will and bring it to your office. When do you want me to come? So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Jessica Burns.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Jessica Burns, and I live a couple blocks away in Tempe. Uh, like a couple of the other speakers, I was also one of the four arrested last month. And I'm not only frustrated with the shooting investigation, but a couple other things. So just to start with the investigation, I've got the same demands as everybody else. To fire the officer that shot Antonio Arce, and to provide the Tempe Police Civilian Review Board with the power to subpoena and to hire and fire police officers. We'd also like Svob Park to be renamed to Antonio Arce Memorial Park, and a fully transparent investigation into the wrongful death of Antonio Arce. The last thing, well, another thing, is for the chief to be fired. If you're not gonna fire her, just send her back to El Cerrito. I mean, she was a shit chief there, so she'll be the same here. I'm not even joking, guys. They're, okay, so, El Cerrito High School had a shooting a few years ago, and they waited over the weekend until those kids were back in the classroom that the shooting occurred in to go and interest them. They knew all weekend who the kids were, and they waited until you're in class with other kids to go and interest them. That just, the whole investigation, all her investigations are slow. Another thing, there's only one city council member up here that agreed to meet, and it was actually the most productive conversation I've had in years in relation to any of this. So that's just another thing. Your job is to meet with us and to talk to us, and out of every single person that we emailed, one agreed to meet. So, thank you. The fourth thing, um, during our arrest, a couple people got hurt. I sustained a pretty, pretty moderate concussion, uh, and was told by Sergeant Espin, not sure where he went, that you guys would investigate that. That didn't happen, and we've heard nothing. So, um, yeah, that's it. By the way, nice thirty-six thousand dollar travel bill.
Next, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please come down? State your name, place your residence for the record. Is anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name, place your residence for the record.
Uh, my name is Leonard Clark, and, uh, look, I understand you're like, wow, why are these people yelling at me, being mean to me? But the thing is, a fourteen-year-old child, four hundred, five hundred feet away, body cam footage, was summarily executed. And I know you might say, well, Leonard, the Supreme Court says, under the vaguest of excuses, the most ambiguous reasons, a child who was fleeing five hundred feet away, skinny little hundred fifteen-pound little boy, who never turns once back, gets shot in the back, summary execution by the officer, judge, jury, and executioner. They, you know, our friends say, hey, don't be an armchair quarterback. But we have the video cam. We also know, the video cam part you wouldn't show us, but supposedly showed the reporters, that, uh, he got there, he was using obscenities, this officer, oh, come on, partner, put your arm out, as young Antonio is face down, drowning in his own blood in the United States of America, and what I thought was a progressive city. You know, I'm sorry, I, you know, I do feel empathy even for you. I'm not gonna hate, but, you know, this is a fourteen-year-old child. So I really don't care. I don't care if I'm angering Democrats. I'm an independent progressive, and I don't know why the state legislators who oversee this district won't speak up as well, okay? I don't see Senator Juan Mendez here. I don't see Representative Vizel Blanc. I don't see Representative Athena Salmon. So I'm sick and tired of Democrats telling us that they stand up for us, and you can't even call for the Department of Justice, when I have to sit here and thank a Republican governor who I disagree with totally politically, who says, you know, Glendale Police Department, that's a whitewashed investigation. But yet, a fourteen-year-old child is shot in the back, and you're gonna hand it over to Bill Montgomery, a man who already botched it up, botched up the Mesa killing. So I'm sorry. I don't hate you, I actually love you too, but I'm not here to please you. A fourteen-year-old child has been executed. It's on body cam, cussing, then he waits for two minutes, oh, I can't do anything. And then the other two officers come, and they just have to put those handcuffs on, the skinny little fourteen-year-old boy, Antonio, drowning in his own blood, on, in handcuffs. You could at least, you could at least, at a minimum, call for the Department of Justice to investigate. They're doing it for the tasing, which they should do. Governor Ducey won't speak up, at least he spoke up for the other man in Glendale. And the obfuscation, all of it, that the police are using, this is not what we do in the United States of America. This is what Putin does in Russia. This is what they do in third world countries. So, it's not about politics, but I will bring it up because you're not gonna listen. Every one of you who is a Democrat should be primary. And you know what? All of the young Democrats in the audience and watching this on cable, when these Democrats tell you to go knock on doors for them, how progressive they are, actions matter. Your words are only words. At least at a minimum, call for the Department of Justice to investigate the summary execution of a fourteen-year-old child. I love you, I know that angers you, you're in a lot of pain, but think of the family and a fourteen-year-old child who is no longer here because an officer who was too lazy to chase after that little kid and is angry, shoots him in the back. Judge, jury, and executioner. This is not the way it should be. Thank you.
Is anyone else wanting to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Uh, my name is Jake Morris. Uh, I live in Chandler, but I'm an ASU student. Simple question, just how many more? I know you can't answer that because of some bullshit excuse, but how many more? How many more are going to die by hands of cops? People who, who at childhood, for some of us, have been told it's people who should we look, look up to. And as I grow older, and as I see more and more people get killed, there, I distrust them more and more. Seriously, I can't, I can't, I, I can't look, I can't trust a cop anymore. I cannot trust a cop at all. There are killers. How many more? How many more is it going to be? You know, how many are, how many have they shot already? And it's only March? You got nine months left to go. You gonna top a hundred? Gonna get a new record? Seriously, how many more is it going to take? Who's fourteen, who's running away? How many more? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get our attention? Yes, please come forward.
Um, hello, my name is Megan. I'm here on behalf for justice for Antonio and his brother Jason that was not able to make it today. Um, we haven't seen anything, like, as far as, like, we're concerned, you guys haven't put in effort to this case, 'cause, um, for some of the students I have talked to that were Antonio's friends, we don't feel safe here anymore. We really don't. And I was with you at the youth town hall meeting, and I can say you genuinely speak from the cart, saying that you want the youth to be heard, but I'm here talking, and I wanna know if I'm being heard, 'cause you're shutting all of us down, and you haven't really put in your part into this. You said that you can't answer our questions. Will give us one of those spots to talk and answer our questions and let us be heard? 'Cause we have, we don't, how do we put in a request? Or can you not answer that?
No, I can't. I'll talk to you after. I'll talk to you after. I can't talk right now, but after the meeting, I can.
Okay, when?
I can talk to you right after this meeting.
One of our staff members can meet with you and provide you the information you need so you can be on the scheduled public appearances.
Okay.
How, how can you give, how can you give someone else a spot?
I could talk to you after, if you'd like.
Okay, I would love that. Please do. As I said again, I am here for justice for Antonio, and I stand up for what I believe in.
Uh, Frankie Clark, or Clock, excuse me?
Hi, my name's Frankie Clock. I'm here representing Antonio Arce. Um, I'd like to start my statement off by making a moment's silence for the families' This statement tonight is not about harassing or belittling or trying to condemn the public legal system in any way. This is about justice. A fourteen-year-old boy, a fourteen-year-old kid, a human being that will never see the light of day ever again, um, who was shot back in the back twice, um, without a fair trial, without being read his rights, um, treated like a criminal, um, and I just think that's really a huge, it shows a lot about what And I just think that's really a huge, it shows a lot about what our local department, what your guys' priorities are when it comes to the safety and the protection of this community. Last month, when we were here, a second story addition to a house was more important than a 14-year-old's life. And I think, and honestly, I'm not surprised that our city council would have those types of priorities, because our city council would also elect and hire a public and known predator, a sexual predator, who also came up to a bunch of young girls after, who actually came up to young girls after the protest, and continued talking to us, and continued harassing us. It's not surprising to me that that's prioritized in this city council. I am asking for the justice of Antonio Arce. I am asking for the release of the information of the officers who released the information of the detained people that were arrested to the, to the private militia that has been harassing me and a bunch of other protesters. I would also like to talk about the correlation between the deadly exchange and the militarization of our local police department training with the Israeli army. I think the, I think, I think the racist, I think the racist militarization and the criminalization happening in, within the Israeli army is directly correlating to the criminalization and the racist violence and murderous tendencies of our local police department. Thank you.
Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get our attention? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and place your presence for the record.
My name's Alex, and I'm all over the western states of the United States. I don't have a residence. This officer here is not even wearing a name badge. Your officers aren't accountable when they do stuff like this, and then they refuse to give their identification to people, so he's trying to act in a way like a plainclothes officer, which even, that shouldn't be illegal either. That shouldn't even be legal either. And then, your commander is not doing anything about it. So, also, next time you guys come through security, go in like everyone else. Stop thinking that, stop, stop thinking that you guys are above everyone here. These guys hired you, it's not the other way around.
All right, that's all the cards I have. Is anyone else willing to address us? Could you please get our attention? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, I did turn in a card, maybe they couldn't read my writing, but, hi, I'm Michelle Brown, changing gears. I lived in Tempe, North Tempe since 1970, which predates most of you. I'm very happy to tell you I don't have a mortgage payment anymore in my house, I've lived in the same house for 47 years. I'm here regarding the Camden II development, and I really appreciate that developer and the council has approved to continue it, but I just want to reinforce the density of 497 units is absolutely incredible and not in keeping with the community and the North Tempe community. Since they had their first hearing a month ago, the Indian Bend Neighborhood Association has also submitted information to the council disagreeing and with the density of this apartment complex. We all stand by that. I went onto the Tempe Community Action Agency website the other day, and I didn't realize I was going to be doing this tonight, it's the first time I've ever got up here. And if I'm not mistaken, and someone can check my statistics, 21% of the people who live in North Tempe live below the poverty level. Of that 21%, 52% are single moms with children. So this really, really speaks to a great need for affordable housing in North Tempe. It really, really does. I just can't reinforce that enough. And I'm sure you've gotten a lot of material in your packets with lots of comments from people about the density of this complex. If they had said, yeah, we'll stick with 365 units, none of us would be up here protesting it. But 497 units in a very small area in a small community is just not acceptable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under unscheduled public appearances? Unfortunately, you already spoke. Okay, please come forward. State your name and place your presence for the record.
Again, Mike Beaver, Mesa. Slightly different subject. There's a lot of passion, there's a lot of enthusiasm, there's a lot of persistence here. Hopefully, the one thing we can all agree on is the right and wrongness of this. And with that in mind, I was shocked when I heard that there were four people arrested during intermission last time. And so...
They just kind of harassed them, they kind of just kind of broke up their fight?
I wasn't there, I wasn't there, I wasn't there, so I didn't see what happened, but I understand it was pretty low-grade. And my encouragement is discernment, discretion. Let's diffuse this a little bit and work together. And so my appeal to you, Chief Moore, is encourage the force, just drop those charges. Let's start fresh and have an open dialogue. Show good faith, drop those charges, please.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is anyone else? Yes, sir. State your name and place your presence for the record.
I am Jude. I live in Arizona. Here's the deal. Your metro system with your security and your police needs a lot of work. I was coming from the airport yesterday, and I have a camera. Does this look threatening to anybody, a camera? Okay? This is not threatening, it's a camera. That's right. So anyways, we're standing there with cameras, one of the security officers, allied, no, we're back on the platform of the rail, and one of the security officers working, I believe it was Allied Universal, walked up and told me I couldn't record on that platform. Who pays for that platform? Taxpayers. I researched it. It's funded not only at a federal level, but city and state level, too. So here's the deal. We had at least seven police vehicles parked there with lights, they deemed it a hot call, a bunch of security, it's a waste of taxpayers' money. You ought to know what the First Amendment means. I mean, why are you so scared of the First Amendment? Everywhere we go, we are getting hassled. I had an incident the other night, I'm not going to discuss it right now, but it was a bad incident with one of your females, one of your Tempe officers on horseback, and that's going to come to light. We've already posted it. So you had to tell your officers to chill their role and just come at us with respect, because respect gets respect. And, that's right. And we have every legal right to. Even against you police departments who are harassing us. It's, yeah, and I, it's not. And just to tell me in this day and age, you know, in this day and age, the Nazi war criminals said, we're just doing our job. So you need to do your job better.
With that, that's all the cards we have. Thank you for coming. We are adjourned.
Hello, my name is Nissa.
No, I'm...
No, it's an agenda item. I would just like to talk...
Please state your name for the record.
Nissa Hampton. Nissa Hampton.
Turn off your hearing aid.
I would like to talk about item 5B8, tactical robots. Why would we need to buy or our police have tactical robots against 14-year-old children? What would having military grade industry, you know, whatever? Also, why the protesters getting arrested is also a violation of the First Amendment? The phony charges that were brought on to Ben Cooper does not make any sense, especially with the, him assaulting, them assaulting a officer, when in fact it should be the officers getting charged with murdering a 14-year-old child. But, back to the military grade weaponry, why, why would we need military grade weaponry against civilians? I would like to talk about that. Right now. It's an agenda item. Why would we need military grade weaponry against civilians?
Just so you know, the information, it was, our council, we already approved it tonight, it's for...
Oh, why, what?
It was approved, it was already approved tonight, it was under our procurement officer. And with that being said, with that being said, is, Mr. Green, you still here?
Can we appeal?
Can you explain exactly what it is? Well, actually, I, actually, I'm going to take that back. It's a non-public, it's a non-public hearing item, so we actually cannot talk about it, because it's a not-public hearing. It's not, it's not. No, I'm being honest with you. We cannot talk about it, because it was an... All right, well, plus a public item. Mr. Green, can you state what item 5B was for?
Yes, Mayor, Council, this was a purchase for reconnaissance operations for the police department. For those situations where there's a dangerous situation, where police needs to avoid sending a person in to investigate that area, these, the robots are used to be able to protect the officer and the public by being...
Why would an officer need protection from a 14-year-old kid who is running from him?
Okay, just continue and...
It allows two-way...
Like, am I, look at me, I'm like 5A, why would you need protection from me? Not 5A, 5-1, sorry, everyone.
Mr. Green?
The robots allow for two-way communication, a video is also available, so the officers can be able to observe what's going on and try to diffuse the situation and be able to avoid sending an officer into harm's way.
Okay. With that, all right. Thank you, Mr. Green, for answering your question. We are adjourned, thank you.